Good morning, everyone. Let's stand and do pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Jake, if you could do roll call, please.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Jim Mueller.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion to approve.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye. Communications? Jake? Board?
I'm not.
Public comments. This is the portion of the agenda that we can hear from the public that is something that is not on the agenda below. These topics could become possibly further topics on a future agenda. Is there any public comments? Nothing? I'll entertain a motion for today's consent agenda.
Move, we approve today's consent agenda.
I'll support.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Onto business. First one, item up is FY '26 Marion County ICAP insurance renewal. Scott Ziller. Scott, good morning. Thank you for coming this morning. You got great news for us, right? Production, right?
Much better. I got over here kind of a summary of ICAP services. This is the current policy. We should carefully look through all those.
Okay.
But I just wanted to hand to you. This is a summary of the past three years, insurance programs.
Thank you.
Just for reference. And then within your, in the packet that we can, you know, certainly look at it for the values to break down, all the property locations and so on.
Okay. All right.
I know Jim's new, but I think it's just a good kind of look back at the history of Marion County and ICAP. ICAP is a pool rather than an insurance company. So they've got about 800 public entities in the program and about 77 of the 99 counties are members of ICAP. The Maxwell's been Marion County has been a member of that since 1988. ICAP was formed in 1986. So quite a few years. One of the, I think, the big parts of ICAP is all the services that they provide. K Insurance is really kind of the messenger, I guess, if you will, that communicates between the county and ICAP. They've got online, they've got lots of resources for training, loss control, claims handling, general member education seminars. And the unique thing about ICAP is it also includes five degree hours of legal consultation. So we encourage, if you're not, or should certain things come up, to reach out to them and utilize that legal advice on whatever it may be. For the past, you know, 37 years, it's been business as usual. After COVID, I think we all know that things started to get a little crazy, a little wonky with shortages of materials and price increases in materials. Insurance companies and all insurance companies started to notice this and pointed out at some point around '21, '22 is that with these increased costs, including not just the price of material, but the cost now to fix these things had gone up and just indicated that our community may be underinsured now with the values that they have. So in 2023, we had kind of the unprecedented leverage of a 30% increase to the to Marion County and most of the participating public entities. That's somewhat on the conservative side. When we look out at the, you know, the Nationwide's and the State Farms and those, those were 40 and 50% increases. And most of that is on the, is on the property side. So if you own a building, a real building, that's where we have to hit the worst. And so rather than us or the county trying to determine what our buildings were worth and our equipment, ICAP sent out an audit team to go through each location and to try and reassess what those values were. And again, that developed or determined what that 30% increase was going to be last year. So it was a big struggle for the county and most municipalities. But going into this year, and I'm here a little bit early this year because normally we'll come closer to renewal date. County's renewal is on July 15th. We usually get the renewal quote around June 15th. But we try to stay in touch with ICAP to try and give as much information of what renewal would look like in part for county budgeting. And so we're ecstatic to say that the property values this year are just at a flat, a flat renewal rate where we took the big 30% last year. It will still have its. I think usually we have a 4% inflation guard, which just happens every year just to accommodate for that. But ICAP has reduced that to a 2% inflation guard. So trying again, I think they took what they needed to get to stay viable and pay claims for the pool. But so that's come down flat with just that 2% annual increase. The automobile section is going to go up 5%. And partly that's because that's the major, that's our loss leader at the county are the vehicles. And unfortunately, our law enforcement sees the brunt of that and it's dear and it's every, it's every year. So that continues to increase. The, what's unique too about the pool is that the, I think that they work with low deductibles, which today, the only way, you know, the normal person or business that controls, controls the premium is to take higher deductibles. Sometimes those are being forced on us by a regular insurance company. But the vehicle deductibles right now for the county and have been for 30 years. We have a $200 comprehensive deductible. So that's wind, hail, fire, deer, and a $350 deductible for collision. So today, most of us have at least a $500 comp or collision and even higher. So it's going to be our recommendation that the county look to take $1,000 deductibles on the comp and the collision. But while it's a recommendation, we met, I met with Mark Ramey and Jake Grandia when we were kind of in a panic mode about the premiums. And unfortunately, that quoting is a real time with ICAP. So we kind of have to come up with a plan, submit it, and then get that back. But what we were understanding was that taking, doubling or tripling your deductible doesn't always save you that much in insurance. So sometimes it makes sense to keep the lower one. The deductibles on our equipment, our road graders, our Bobcats, our lawn tractors, whatever, that's $1,000. And I don't think we see a lot of losses there. So that one, again, maybe not a concern. But our property deductible on all of our buildings and structures is $5,000. So you know, just speaking for myself, I have a $2,500 deductible on my home. So $5,000 is for the amount of property and exposure that we have is fairly significant. So we'll be quoting, asking them to quote various deductibles, higher deductibles, so $10,000, $25,000, $50,000, to see what that does to the quote. So we should be receiving the quote. So this is kind of food for thought for the board of supervisors, but it really would make more sense when we get that early renewal quote, which will have these options in there. And Tany will provide a breakout on that. So we can see, is it worth taking more? How much did that save us? We also discussed last year is a taking higher deductibles, but then also starting a deductible reserve fund. So if there was, I know there's not always excess money laying around, but if we can allot a certain amount to a deductible reserve fund, take a higher deductible and that, you know, our building losses aren't significant. So we could go a number of years by taking a higher deductible, saving that premium, but also putting that money away for one of those large events. Rather than trying to rob another program's assets to pay for them. Covers our previous needs.
Scott, can I ask you a question real quick? Okay, so I want to make sure. The premium jump was, we weren't necessarily expecting it in our last budget, but this budget we did. I'm trying to, I'm speaking with Jake too at the same time. So, because this says 715 and 24. This is where this premium increase. So you're, you're thinking though for '25 that it's going to be more status quo is what you're thinking or you don't know?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
So not, very little, except I said 2% on the property.
Okay.
And 5% on the auto.
I think what, so the FY '26 budget here. So the renewal that, they'll send us all the information in the renewal packet here shortly. Tany will be sending us. And there's the backend work of all the renewal paperwork. We, departments help us and all things like that. We'll get it to them, but it's the premium that we'll pay in FY '26. And so we did just budget a 10% increase in that.
Okay.
So I think what he's saying is there's better news than that original forecast.
Okay. I suppose this would be similar. I'm going to use this analogy. For those that received their homeowner's insurance, like I did, you know, for February 1st payment, it went up significantly. Is this the same thing? Do you see what I mean? It's just we're, we're seeing these numbers, but are they kind of always in the rears? Is what I, is kind of how you're looking at it?
Kind of because the 30% increase was based on what the loss experience and not seeing just, just of ICAP, but with all national carriers. There, unfortunately, that gets passed down. The unique part is that the pool isn't tied to California wildfires or hurricanes. So it's our group, but the losses of our pool then dictate that. So with DeRachio, with the school district that had a big loss. So they take those, that depletes their reserves in terms of losses. They said if we continue that trend, we're going to be, we won't be able to pay those. And so ICAP wasn't unique to taking that. They said, here's what we have to have from all, all the people in the pool. And they do that commensurate with your particular community's, you know, risks and assets. So that's what we were hoping. What we're seeing out in the personal and commercial world is that they're still continuing to take rate. And the big fear is that we in the Midwest will be paying for, Nationwide's and the carriers that are, that are ensuring those, it's already getting passed down to us personally. So that's what, I guess, what's, what's unique about being.
Go ahead, Jeff.
When was the, have we ever in the last however many years ever gone to market? And not necessarily, I mean, I recognize, and again, I'm clearly the new guy.
Right.
Come from private industry. And every three years at a minimum, we bid out all of our insurance. When was the last time, if ever, have we ever gone to market to get a private carrier? I mean, the easy thing is to just always renew with the same company over and over and over and just eat the increases. And I mean, my question, my challenge to the rest of the group is clearly, we're early. So we've got time. My suggestion is let's go to market. Let's go out there and figure out, are these guys reasonable? I recognize it's a group of counties, but they're all underwritten by an insurance company. It's not a private, probably not a private fund. I'd want to know what's our market rate for the regular insurance companies? And rightfully, you said more than likely, we're going to be paying for the Californias, for the North Carolinas, for the national loss to, to help pay those insurance companies back. So they have a pool to draw from. I'd want to know what's, what's our market? What's it cost for self-insured with stop loss? And then clearly, whatever this ICAP comes back as. Because I mean, I'm just, I'm very mindful of taking the easy route. And I'm not suggesting we have. But we all fall victim, me included, of, okay, well, this is what we paid last year and it's 10% more. So I don't like it, but here we go. As a representative of our entire community, we need to make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for the buck and making sure that we take care of our budget. Because having gone through the budget session last week, you know, money's tight. And if we can get the same thing for less money or hold these guys accountable, because our citizens are holding us accountable, let's do that.
Yeah, I anticipated that from the new guy.
Good, all right.
They, that's the first thing that we look at. And it is insurance and how we, how we can cut premium. Yes, we have gone to market. We've, there aren't very many companies that do it. And some of them that do it don't do it very, I don't say don't do it very well, but they make it also very difficult to get out of if things don't go well. We see that with, with schools. And so they, they're had the same mentality is let's go out and get a quote. They're usually, and have done this in the past, is shoot the premium out, shoot the bottom out to get the business. And then you, then it's kind of a bait and switch. And then so you see these years come back where it increases to a point where it's not satisfactory. They want to get out. And, and I can't remember all the steps, but it is quite arduous to get out of that, to get back to where you were. And we've seen that happen. It's been a few years ago. There was some information come out about ICAP program that at their annual board meeting, they were doing, going to an exotic location. And that rang a bell with all of us. And so right off the bat, we, I don't say right foul, because again, I've been a long indoctrinated in the ICAP philosophy. But then we immediately approached all of our municipalities and county and said, you know what's going on? Would you like us to do this, to switch? None of, none of our cities and counties switched at that time. And the biggest caveat to moving right now is this underbelly of we have losses that I can visit with you about later. We have losses in our system that number one, prevent us from switching at this time. There are significant losses. And so if we were to switch, those will not be paid by the new company and nor by the current company, which means that the county will absorb.
I don't believe that. Because typically what happens with an insurance coverage is the losses that are incurred under a certain policy carry forward with that policy even if you change to another company. So I mean, I, I, I recognize. You're in the insurance business and not me, but that's not my experience.
Right, but I can support that with documentation from both the action that we took, the replies from the carriers that we applied to, and ICAP's stances. If you leave, we're done, we stop here and you guys have to pay for the rest. That's been our, kind of our barrier at this point. I agree with you on most large accounts. We'd like to get out there and look every three, four, or five years and just see what's available. It's also something that we want to start at least a year in advance. If there's anything that's something you want to do, I should be starting that now, not for this renewal, because there's not enough time. Right? Because these companies are all working on July 15 renewals. We need to work on it. Because if you look at the size and the amount of information in that policy has to be transferred over. So it takes a lot of back and forth to get there. And the biggest part for us is to go, here's what's here and here's what's here and what's missing. Right? So, so that's the tough and the long part of that process. So we're absolutely open to that and looking. And I think there's one other carrier in the state of Iowa that I know does some of that. It's EMC is the other one. We've had out of state programs come try to do this. And historically, they've been successful. Or have ended up with, like our current group had switched from an EMC school program to an out of state. And now is locked into something they can't get out of. And their premiums obviously have gone up more than where they were when they switched.
Jim, and you make a very good point. I do think that this is something, because we've also talked about, you know, whether it's this insurance or health insurance, you know, type of thing, and seeing what our options are out there. So definitely something that, you know, I think come this summer that we could definitely discuss. And, but.
I, I would, and I, I agree. I, timing is everything. And I would just, if it's too late, which I find difficult to believe, but if it's, if it's too late to impact this renewal, I am, this is my first year of four years. I'll put you on notice. We're going to do it next year. We better start early enough that we can do that analysis and come back and give people the right answers. Because knowledge is power. And right now, when it comes to insurance, I got no knowledge. And I need to figure out what's going on with it.
Jake and Steve, do you have any questions?
No.
Do we, Jake, regarding this, are you needing an action? Are you just needing?
Not that I'm aware of. This was Scott presenting the, kind of the renewal and the processes. And I think what generally happens now is we will go through the administrative side of providing them, you know, the number of vehicles and all that stuff, part of the renewal.
Okay.
Different departments help provide that information. We'll bring back to you guys the renewal when it's available from them. It's generally at the end of June. And then it's also, they'll have the actual renewal rates and then options for deductibles to make that variable. If you want to go from a $10,000 deductible to $25,000, those choices are made. You pick a proxy. Generally, my office has been the one that's like the go between, in between on when claims and things are that happening. So that's generally the end of June. And then if you want to start working for something for more of a RFP type thing or something for next year or work with them, that can be done. Absolutely. We haven't done an actual, it's been some time for a full blown. There were very, very limited people interested in participating with us. So, so that's, so at this point, I don't think there's any official action that needs to be taken.
All right. Scott, I appreciate it. We have no further questions?
Thank you.
I look forward to figuring out what we got to do.
Yeah, it'd be great for probably you guys just to visit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I look forward to it.
I'll entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moves.
Dang it.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Onto item number two. This is the public hearing portion. This is for the proposed county zoning map amendment ordinance 2025-1. Missy, I'm not going to read all the parcels. The parcels are online, those that are in the audience.
This is a project happening just west of Pella. On the access, it's off of 163 and 190th. Actually, the county gravel road, 190th Avenue is services. This 145 acres that's being proposed to go from A1 to Ag Residential for proposed 36 lot subdivision. That will come at a later time pending the approval of the rezoning. So as we identified in the staff report, this 145 acre shows as agricultural currently on the land use plan. Ag Residential is considered to be agricultural in the land use designation. Ag Residential is used where properties have exceeded the maximum density of four per 40 and when then at subdivision level. So Ag Residential is meant to be intermixed within the A1 zoning. There's other rural residential subdivisions in the area and off of 163. Low density residential is reasonably compatible with the adjacent ag farmland. Always remembering that Iowa's an ag state. Property owners wishing to move to rural Iowa are urged to remind that or remember that. There will be dust, there will be smell, there will be chemicals associated with agricultural uses. And those such uses can't be, are not regulated by zoning. So with that being said, again, we have 190th that services these parcels of land. However, moving forward prior to the subdivision, we're awaiting confirmation of the DOT study and how adding a residential subdivision to 190th would impact 163. My understanding is that the, the chair of this group is now undergoing a medical procedure and is not available. But he has had a discussion with the DOT. They've given some type of preliminary discussion about it, but we don't have, and we definitely would have to have that in place prior to the subdivision being presented. So with that, environmental health, I've had several discussions with Cameron. And three to eight acre lots are what are proposed. So they're more than adequate to.
Six, three to eight?
Three to, so ranging in three acre being the minimum up to eight acres. They're more than adequate to have room for, you know, any type of septic system that's determined. The water service in the areas Iowa Regional Utilities. This is a very unique situation in the front, three to four lots are served by Pella REC and the rest of it's served by Mid-American that we can't control because that's regulated by the Iowa utilities. Obviously, we know this area between Pella and Des Moines is a very sought after area for housing. So this, this does lay within 1,000 feet. As you can see, that black circle there, that is Pella's one mile. Well, it has been, you know, we've included them in the discussions. We've verified that yes, indeed, the map we have is right. So this all lays within Marion County's jurisdiction. As I included in, in the staff report, some of the discussions that took place during the rezoning with the zoning commission, we had several neighbors present and with some discussion. So they voiced concern about the runoff. I did include the document from Garden and Associates. And Brad's here today to speak on. So currently, we have 145 acres of bare farm ground. And we all know that bare farm ground, there's a lot of runoff and there's a lot of erosion. Once all that is sowed down to homes, it's their, Brad's determination that that would slow that down in the 25% range. I mean, I mean, and I will say that the overall concept plan of the subdivision, they have included drainage easements that are still in place and, and go through some of the lots. So they're, they're not taking out the tiling and the drainage that's currently there. It's been incorporated into the subdivision and will be presented as a part of that subdivision. There was also neighboring property owners that discussed fencing the perimeter to keep people off of their property. Although fencing is not a requirement of the zoning ordinance or the subdivision ordinance, it's regulated by 359A state code and basically jurisdiction of the township trustees. Marion County zoning ordinance does say that these rezonings and/or subdivisions will meet all other state and county required codes. So I've urged them to work with any neighboring property owners. Again, we all got a letter from Mr. Vermeer, which is included in your packet. They have, do you have an agreement in place? And then again, we talked about the increased traffic on 190th and in the review of the DOT. So we're still awaiting that formal review. But I guess if you've got any other questions for me, or we've got several other members here from the group, so.
Yep, this is the public hearing portion. We're here to hear from the public.
If you want to speak, we have a mobile mic where you just need to come to the podium.
Anybody online like to speak?
I'm Vaughn Newindol. I'm one of the neighbors to the development. And I just, I have a request because I know some people couldn't make it today. And I know we have options of online and telephone and things like that. But in person, you know, is always a better, more impactful, I guess. And so I see a request has been made to waive the second and third reading. And I would just like to encourage that you have a second and third reading to give some of these folks a chance to come to the meeting. I know some things have popped up and, and some individuals couldn't make it today. And I think they should have a chance to have come and voice their concerns as well. So.
Appreciate that, Vaughn.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Good morning, my name's Nick Heims. I'm one of the members of the development group. So as Missy shared, we have, there was some concerns that were voiced in the initial. We worked with, with those concerns, put plans in place. We're very diligent, making sure that we can be good neighbors. We're very diligent, making sure that we can be good neighbors, good stewards of the land. We feel like this is a development that is needed in Marion County. So we have been working with a number of parties. Bill Vermeer specifically had concerns with the fencing, those pieces, we worked directly with him, we have an agreement about that. Also, along with that, working with some of the runoff. I think over the years, there's a number of, a decent amount of runoff that wasn't being addressed. So we worked with him, have a plan in place where we will work together to make sure that we put in the right tiling, erosion control, those type of things. We would like you to consider waiving those as we want to continue to move. I know with the, the upcoming weather, it may not seem like we're going to be doing any earth moving in near future. But hopefully, when the spring breaks and we're able to start moving dirt, we'd be able to get after that. Just so we can start getting this development underway, it's important to us to, as time is, is important to us. So we would definitely appreciate your consideration and waiving the second and third reading. So yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
One other thing I'd like to add, so on 190th, this subdivision that's proposed would include three additional access points or roads that are going to feed on to 190th. Those, the county road department has looked at it and, and there's, you know, there's been discussion, there's a very large crossroad pipe that, you know, Scott, that where these drainage easements feed to, but they have approved three access points, there'll be a total of four roads within, but there's only three that would access on to 190th.
No further comment, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Can I say something?
Motion and support.
Yeah, we have motion and support.
McCombs?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
On to item number three, which is ordinance 2025-1. Board, you have heard the public hearing portion and this would be approving the reading if we wanted to approve this ordinance. Do you have any questions for Missy?
This was, this is item number three, which is only the first reading.
First reading, yeah.
Jim, do you have any questions?
No, I think I might, had a question on the fencing, but appeared everybody is on the same page with that, so.
Yep, there to work on that, that, again, that's something that even though we don't have zoning control over that, that's something that it is a state code and if there's a request put out forth to the trustees, then they need to work on that request and work together to get that taken care of.
I would like to make a comment before we, before we move forward and that is, I agree with, in prior service, we've always made it a rule or a guideline, never to waive second and third readings unless it was a public safety issue. And I'd like to continue to carry that forward. It gives the public an opportunity to come in and, and make a comment or issue a concern. It sounds as if the DOT has not given their approval at this point anyway, so you guys wouldn't be moving dirt anyway, right? Until you get that approval. So, I mean, I'm 100% in favor of developing the first reading, but I am absolutely against second, third, because it is not a public safety issue. And I think that's something we should consider going forward.
Yeah, I'm just to that comment, I mean, our processes typically are that, you know, if I have a request, that obviously I can put that in there, it's up to you guys totally whether or not you are for that. So when they made the request, so that's the way I, you know, I presented it to you, but yeah, obviously you have that.
So for, so for Claire, did Jake, the second and third reading would be in subsequent meetings? Would it be like the next meeting and then the following meeting or how do we want to do that?
Well, that's up to the board on how, when they want to schedule their agenda, but typically, historically, we have waived second and third for a majority, for a variety of things. And that's completely a board decision. So generally what would happen is, we're making some assumptions here before any motions, okay? So just from a practice standpoint, approve of first. If there isn't a wave, if you don't waive second and third, most generally the second reading would come back on and then it could potentially waive the third at that meeting. If there's no further comment, that, I've seen, we've seen that before here too, so it's a board decision, but that I would assume would most generally be, definitely be back on this agenda for the next meeting in two weeks.
So I have one other question for you as a board. If, is the DOT, I mean, is that something that, obviously we're working with them as fast as we can, but we need to, I mean, is that one of the key factors to have that information back from them?
Well, yeah, that would be, I think it's very helpful, because this is going to include a turning lane, like we, we, you know, that costs money. So unless we can get a grant, I don't know if that's going to include a turning lane on 190th.
So I guess I'd urge the group, Brad, Mike.
Well, at this point. Oh, okay.
I don't have that in writing from them.
Right. You see where I'm coming though?
Okay, board, the property owner, Wittenberg, I'm the owner of property to the west and I'm concerned about damage to the tile that drains to the east through the property we are, we are meeting about. Thank you, Mr. Wittenberg.
And Brad, can you speak to any of that?
It's all right though.
Okay.
We have the right.
Brad Udermark with Garden and Associates, yeah. So as far as the drainage goes, and I don't know the specific tile that she's referring to, but as Missy talked about, you know, we're going from, when we run the numbers based on the SUDAS, the statewide urban design and specifications, the coefficient, runoff coefficient for the row crop ground that there, is there right now is higher than what it would be for. I mean, we're not talking about quarter or third acre lots, you know, we're talking about three to seven, eight acre lots. So even with some roadways built and some houses in there, that the overall runoff coefficient for development would be lower than what it is for the row crop. You kind of look at it from a cover crop, you know, we talk about cover crop standpoint, right? So you're kind of looking at a permanent cover crop put over this ground that's currently agricultural. So, and, and on top of that, that's not taking into account, we look at what we call time of concentration to how fast the water leaves the site. Typically, if you have more grass, buffer strip, that slows that runoff down as well in addition to the, to the benefit of the lower coefficient. So, yeah, I'm confident we've run the numbers.
Hey, well, I, I think this, we probably ought to get with that gentleman, let's see what his actual concerns. I don't know if it's physical damage or water, you know, it'd be a good time to do that before the second reading.
Yeah, if you, if you can pass along the information of whoever that is, we can certainly talk to them.
All right, great.
Not a problem.
All right, board, entertain a motion for ordinance 2021-1.
What is 25-1?
2025-1, sorry, approving the first reading of the proposed ordinance of 2025-1.
Support or so moved?
Second.
Mueller?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Item four at this time, board, you've expressed that you want to take no action at this point.
Right.
What do you want to give the direction to the board? Do you want to have this placed separately? Or do you want the, do you want to have the wave second and third on the next agenda? Or are you wanting to have the readings as second and then the following meeting having the third? Trying to give some direction.
Well, I think, you know, we could do that, have the next meeting have the second reading and with the option of waiving, you know, the third reading, but we don't have to do it then either, so.
I will place it on the agenda, I will not be here. Carrie will be taking the, the next reading.
And I would recommend that if someone has a comment during public hearings, make sure that they're here for the next one, because the likelihood that the third reading gets waived is much higher at the next meeting than it was at this one.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Item number four, I'll entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Support.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Got ahead myself, Jake. Item number five, resolution 2025-20, which is the award the contract of the T-17 mill and overlay. Board, we have before us. This is a contract, I know Tyler isn't able to be with us this morning. Something come up. Why, so he contacted me and said he wasn't going to be able to be here. I believe this is pretty self-explanatory, this is something that we have done before. We have used Norris asphalt previous and I don't know, Steve, do you have any comments? Since obviously you have.
Well, this, this is a project that Tyler's talked to us about in the past. So, no, he's, he's been pretty, very thorough about, you know, the, the traffic flow and, and what is going to take place with this project. So I have no problem with approving resolutions.
Okay, all right. Jim, do you have any, do you have any questions, concerns?
I have no questions or concerns.
Okay, all right. Entertain a motion for a resolution 2025-20.
I move, we approve resolution 2025-20.
I'll second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Item number six is resolution 2025-21. This is the funding agreement for the traffic safety improvement project, program project for flashing beacons at three locations. I do know that Tyler has also spoke to us a little bit about this. And this would be the purchase, this TSEP grant would be the purchase of and installation of four flashing beacons at three different intersections of Marion County paved secondary roads. We will go to, if you could go to the map, please. Here, it looks like a T-17 and G-46 to be added one. And then what is, what's, is it?
That'd be basically business, business 163 and going into Pella there on the, toward Vermeer, then down to Vermeer.
So two locations there, and so I'm assuming one location has, because there's four beacons total, so.
Well, Tyler says, recommends that we approve that, so I agree with that.
I'll support.
Yeah, so resolution 2025-21, are you?
I make a motion, we approve resolution 2025-21.
I'll still support.
Mueller?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right. Board, updates. Steve, you got any updates?
No, I'm okay. Ready for bed.
Jim, you got any updates?
I do not.
Board, I, I have a couple of updates, have board of health meeting next week. Conference board is supposed to be scheduled tomorrow, obviously we're watching the weather, so there'll probably be more communication coming out on that. For next meeting, just for the board to be thinking about health insurance, that document, I would like to be able to have that form. Lisa, if we could have the form we haven't had in the past and it's just presented to us. We don't see any, I mean, there was no change, we talked about that in the budget, but.
Are you, are you looking for the resolution?
Yeah, for that resolution.
For the next meeting?
Yeah, for the next meeting.
Sure.
And then also Chris is not here, but I believe that we were going to hopefully have our space study. And when I mean space, I mean on the space study, so he should hopefully, Chris, if you are listening, if you could hopefully maybe have that for next meeting, that would be great. And then board, I'd like you to continue, continue our discussion at the next meeting for our salary study. So please be thinking about that and what options there and you know, bring those forth and I think that would be a good discussion to have, so. Other than that, that's all I have, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.